Welcome to our council meeting for August 11, 2016. This is a special meeting. I called the meeting to order at 5:05 PM. We just have two items on our agenda today and we are privileged to have the opportunity to interview three of our citizens in the town of Gilbert. And we're grateful for your efforts in being here and for your commitment to the town. We sincerely appreciate you putting yourself out here for the good of the community and we know that it takes a tremendous amount of sacrifice, so we do thank you and your families for assisting us in this effort. This is an administrative item. This administrative item is for council discussion and action. And so at this time, we will conduct the interviews for the vacant town council seat with a term ending January 2017. The format will be as follows. We will have all three of the candidates, the order has been randomly determined just prior to this meeting, and we will have each candidate come down to the podium here. And they will be given two minutes for opening. There are six different questions. All candidates will receive the same six questions and we will just go in a order of my right to left. And after all six questions are answered with a three-minute time limit, we will have a one-minute closing statement. All three candidates will be waiting upstairs in one of our conference rooms and so none of them will hear each other's answers, but will be welcome to join us back into council chambers immediately following all three interviews. After the interviews are concluded, we will recess our special meeting and reconvene an executive session. The council members will all, all six of us will go upstairs to room 233 where we will have an executive session. And immediately following the conclusion of that executive session, we will come back down and in this room, conduct Agenda Item 2, which is the discussion voting and selection of a council member to fill that vacancy. So that's the format that we will follow tonight. I think we've explained that fairly clearly and we will proceed. There is no roll call, pledge of allegiance or anything on this. We're good? Okay. Just following the agenda. So at this time, we will excuse two of our three to go back up to room 233. Robin will take you up there. Our first interview will be Eric Jones and the second interview will be Robert Dunn. The third interview will be James Canlin. So Eric, we'll have you step to the podium and those little box with, there's a little box with some lights on there and that will guide you in your timing. It's just right on top of the podium.
Got it.
That's the one. So again, Eric, thank you for being here. We appreciate your commitment to Gilbert and we look forward to hearing from you.
Well, thank you for having me, Mayor Daniels and town council members. I really do feel it's a privilege to be here. It's kind of one of those fast and furious things that just kind of happens in life and I really consider it an honor to even be considered for this role, to serve the town in this way. I love Gilbert. Gilbert is an amazing place. We have something very special here in this town and any opportunity to step up and to be involved is important, I think. And so I'm here, I'm coming and I know you read the information about me and the application and all that, but I'm just hoping that the wide array of experiences and things that I've done in the past, whether it be in business or in just helping out around the town in service in the private sector of real estate, in technology sectors, whatever it might be, that it would just be able to be used possibly in this role here as an interim council member. So, thank you for having me. I'm humbled to be here. I'm ready for the questions, I guess.
So the town has adopted a set of financial policies which are public record and available upon request to the town clerk. Are there any changes or additions to these policies that you would make? If so, which ones and why?
Okay, so I got a copy and I would like to say that I read every single line of it to pick it apart and just to make sure that I found some problems with it. But I did do a cursory glance at it as well as any other information I have just from living in Gilbert for over 21 years now and being involved in different capacities. And I appreciate the detail in the report, but after reviewing it and looking at things, I guess I decided that my view is this interim role, I mean, we're talking about four months, maybe a little bit longer than that. I don't feel as though this role is one that's supposed to come in and pick apart a fiscal policy that has just been approved and signed by the mayor, I believe it was just at the end of last month that that was done. So to come in and do that, I don't know if that's really the primary role of an interim council member, but rather to come alongside the existing council and just help. And where commitments have been made, commitments need to be kept. Now, I did look at things and I am in complete agreement and I love the fact that in our community, that within our state of purposes, fiscally, our balanced budget, we have the aspects of financial conservatism, but also with flexibility. We have the understanding that we're going to adhere to the generally accepted accounting and management practices and policies as well as transparency and communication. So I'm in full agreement with those things. I embrace them wholeheartedly and I'm happy that we do have that in our fiscal policies here in the town of Gilbert. I'm also, I want to add, I'm a zero-based budget kind of guy. I like that. I'm a fan of that. I think it helps prevent money going places where maybe it won't best be used. It helps us to focus on the things that matter the most first and also prevents having maybe areas of the organization, or in this case, the government of the town of Gilbert, kind of bulging just because they expect to always get what they've had and maybe a little bit more. So I'm a fan of zero-based budgeting and I'm also, also view the role of a council member, really anybody, in this type of an elected role, not that this is necessarily elected in the same way, but I view it as public servants and I've known most of you for long enough to know that you adhere to that also, that you're public servants first and foremost. And because of that, we have really that fiduciary responsibility of stewarding the resources of the community, which are the hard-earned tax dollars of our neighbors here in Gilbert. And so I would take that very, very seriously.
Eric, again, thank you for being part of the process here. My question is on Parks and Rec.
Okay.
As you've observed the design phase of the regional park in South Gilbert, what are two areas that you feel are strengths in the design and two opportunities the town should be addressing going forward? And then I have a second part on the financial model. I'd love to hear your initial thoughts on that.
My initial thoughts on the project are I think it's very impressive. And I've had a chance to look at the different iterations as they've been coming out of the proposal and the plan. And it's one of those things that ultimately, we'll see how it all happens in the end, but it's one of those things that could continue to keep us kind of on the top in this state as being a crown jewel of a family-friendly environment and community to live in. Rod and this team over at Parks and Rec have done a great job and so I want to give a shout-out to Rod. He was in my Gilbert leadership class with me, so I feel obligated to do that and very much happy to do that. The other strength, though, that I see in this project is that it can alleviate several other of the capital improvement projects. In other words, what I'm seeing happening as I'm looking at the plans is that there are a lot of projects that were going to be kind of one-offs all around the town, whether it be an aquatic center or some kind of swimming pool or walking paths or more playgrounds and fields and stuff as that. And bringing those, I believe bringing those into more of a centralized, master plan kind of environment adds a lot of extra value. It makes it a lot easier for the citizens and the end-users to be able to interact with all of those things. I really am excited about the aquatic center. Of course, it's Olympic time and so we're watching all the swimmers and we're, you know, dreaming, I don't know what the aquatic center's going to look like, but is it a place where maybe a future Olympian could train and Gilbertonian, you know, on the platform, wearing the gold? I don't know. But I think bringing all of these things together just adds value, adds a lot of value. It takes a lot of things that could be very useful in the community and makes them even stronger. So those are a couple of strengths that I see as it relates. You wanted some weaknesses. Every time I look at the plans for this, I always see that one road that's going through the middle of this very long and seemingly narrow on the drawings park. And I always think, is that going to be congested? Because when something very popular is happening and the place is hopping with people, are people going to end up getting frustrated that it's kind of hard to get in or out? I'm not talking ingress and egress to the actual park, but the one arterial artery that's feeding the whole thing. Another thing, of course, as we look at something like this, it's an expensive project and so you got the funding. And where's that going to ultimately come from as well as the operating costs and maintenance costs? So those are things that I would keep into consideration.
Eric, our capital improvement plan is essential to the short and long-term planning of our community. How would you prioritize the projects contained within the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan?
Okay. So the Capital Improvement Plan is 293 pages. And again, I did not read every single line, but I will say this, it's impressive. And, you know, sometimes you look at things that come out of government and you look at them and go, why does it have to be so many pages and so big, specifically when it's laws and regulations? But when it's a capital improvement plan that is receiving that kind of detail from our town, whether it's council or our town manager, Patrick and others, it's encouraging as a resident of Gilbert to see that kind of attention being put. Because capital improvement plan is, in a lot of ways, the heartbeat of where we're going as a community. So I believe that, and just hang with me here for a moment, I have a purpose for kind of going off on this a little bit, but I believe that governments are established by God to serve man, to punish evil, to encourage good, to safeguard humanity and liberty in life and to enact laws that are deemed necessary to benefit the citizens. And so I see the Capital Improvement Plan helping determine, are we going to do the first things first? And so as I look at the priorities in the Capital Improvement Plan, where I go first is public safety. And I see that that's one of the primary things that's in, that is involved in governing any municipality. And I love the fact that we live in a town where public safety does receive the kind of attention that it needs. And because of the fact of the safety, because of the leadership of Chief Dorn and others and the attention that we put, we have a thriving community. A safe community is going to be a thriving community and I just would love to see that continue. Another, number two, I look at infrastructure. For a community to thrive and for people to be successful in life, in business, anything else, you have to have infrastructure. You've got to have streets and roads for people to be able to do life and do business. You need water, you need waste. All of that, all of that's extremely important and again, we excel at that in Gilbert and that's why we're thriving as a municipality, as a town. Following that, we have redevelopment, which is important, municipal facilities and parks. And so there it is in a nutshell. 293 pages distilled to less than three minutes. All right.
Eric, thank you for coming down tonight and being a part of this process. Having observed the council over the last few months or the last few years, what is one thing that you would do differently and what is one thing that you would keep the same?
That was actually, of all the questions, this is one of my hardest ones, just for the first part. And so I'm going to kind of do a little cop-out here on the first, what would I do differently? And that would be that I just think it's wrong that there's an empty seat right up there. Everything's kind of unbalanced and I kind of like things to be uniform and so I'd love to see that seat filled and it would be an honor to do that over the next few months. So that would be the different aspect. But I want to talk about, as I looked at this question and pondered it, what I love about our town council, and again, I've been involved with interacting with many of you and others in the past, also over the past few years specifically. And what I find about our town council that's so important is that our town council is approachable, is you all are involved in the community. You don't just come in and sit on some comfy chairs up there above everybody else and make rules and decide how people's money is going to be spent and all that kind of stuff, but you're actively involved in serving in real ways alongside people here in the town, alongside other Gilbertonians. And so I think that's very unique. My understanding, I just heard on the news that we're the fourth-largest city now in the state. I believe we just outdid Glendale. Is that true? Can you all? Okay, and so here we are, growing in size, yet leadership is still extremely engaged at the grassroots and very approachable. And I just love that and I'm encouraged and I believe it's going to stay that way. And so, yeah.
Hi Eric, how are you?
Hey, Bridget.
What do you think you would be able to accomplish or contribute to the town during your appointment on the town council?
I believe I come with a unique perspective and I think we all do, because we all have our own experiences, our own background, strengths and so on and so forth. But with my unique perspective, I come with over 21 years of living in Gilbert. I've raised my kids in Gilbert. I still have, my youngest is 12, my oldest is pretty much grown up and in college now. And so I've seen a lot. I've seen Gilbert grow from when we moved here, around 60,000 people. We lived in the neighborhood behind what is now Lowe's, just across kind of kitty-corner from here. There was no Lowe's there, there was really nothing other than this building southeast of where we lived when we first moved here. And now we're what, on nearly 240,000 or a little bit more, the fourth-largest city. And so I've raised my family in Gilbert, I've done business in Gilbert, I lead a church in Gilbert, being involved in nonprofit and from that service perspective, in many ways of helping the least of these and having my hands kind of involved in those types of arenas. Been active in relationships with many of the leaders in this community. I've had the privilege of working with some of you, with working with others in this community, other leaders in this community, our past mayor, John Lewis, our chief of police. And so those are some of the aspects. I have my own background, I have my own experiences, I have my own convictions of godly convictions and conservative values, family values, and I stand on those very strongly. They help guide and direct any kind of decision that I'm going to make in life, including if I were chosen to be an interim council member. But also, I believe what I can contribute is this, is that I come with a motivation truly to serve the council. I really do. I don't have some kind of agenda, you know, in the back of my mind or in my back pocket right now to come in in the next four months to try to dismantle something or push some kind of new agenda. I really believe that the interim council member, that that is a big part of their role, is to come in and help support what's already been done and make it better because they're there, not to try to shift things and change things. And so the other thing that I hope to accomplish, if I'm chosen for this role, is the opportunity that this would provide me to meet more people in our community, to listen to more people in Gilbert, to be able to encourage more of my neighbors that live here in Gilbert, Gilbertonians, which I love that term, which is fabulous. And so I really am driven by encouraging others and building other people up. And I see that personally, this role as a council member would give me a great opportunity for that.
Well, first of all, I didn't want these cushy chairs. I liked the other ones that we had before, so I'm just, you know, trying to save, you know, the tax.
Enjoy them. Enjoy.
Eric, again, thank you for your desire to serve our community. It's been part of your life, but again, thank you. Here's my question. The town council sets policy for the compensation and benefits for all town employees. What compensation approaches are you most familiar with and what is the best approach for Team Gilbert?
Okay. Well, a lot of my background is in sales in my professional career. I was involved in sales and business development and also leading sales teams as well as small business. And so a lot of my compensation experience that I would gravitate to, back in the day as they say, would be incentive-based, performance-based compensation. And I've found that it can be very successful, it helps motivate people and it ultimately, when done well, it rewards those who really need to be rewarded and allows them to make even more than they would make in another structure. But I also realize this, that there's no one-size-fits-all as compensation goes. For instance, at the church that I lead, we don't have an incentive-based, performance-based system. In other words, if I preach a great message, I don't get, you know, a raise. If one of the other ministers in the church is like praying and a lot of their prayers are being answered, they don't get a bonus because of that. So it's not a one-size-fits-all thing in every circumstance, in every environment. And this is what I've seen. I don't know all the details of the compensation for Team Gilbert here, but I do know this, it is working in the sense that it's obtaining, attracting and retaining people of high character and high capability that's producing amazing results. So it is working. Can anything be improved? Everything can be improved in some way, but what we know is that what is happening right now is working and we know that by the amazing people that serve in the town of Gilbert.
Eric, thank you so much for your thoughtful answers. At this time, it'll be your one-minute closing and at the conclusion of that, we'll just have you walk right up that aisle and up to 233, which I think you know how to get to.
I know how to get there. I do. Well, thank you so much. I really do appreciate this opportunity. It is kind of a whirlwind. It all happened very quickly and next thing you know, here we are, standing and talking. But I just want to say, after 21 years of Gilbert, I'm all in. And so that's where I'm at. I'm all in with Gilbert. I love this place. Like I said earlier, it's a special place that we get to live in and serve in and raise families in. And I greatly respect those of you, yourselves definitely included, that have gone before, that have helped make Gilbert the special place that it is. And I know that that takes a lot of commitment, it takes a lot of hours and it takes a lot of work. And so I've come here by God's grace and also humbly recognizing that it would do the same for me, take that kind of hard work and commitment and attention in order to continue something that a lot of people have put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into. And so I do come very humbly and it would be a privilege. And I just want to end with this. There are three things that really drive me in life and those are this, that it's better to give than to receive, we're called to love our neighbors as ourself and in everything due to others as you would have them doing to you. So I subscribe to these and I would bring that to the town council. Again, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next candidate will be Robert Dunn. Robert, thank you again for being here. We'll have you step right up there to the podium. We'd be glad to hear your two-minute opening and after that, council member Victor Peterson will start with the questions.
Good, thank you. First, let me begin by saying thank you for the opportunity to come down here and be considered for this position with the council. I admit that I'm relatively new to Gilbert. I've been living here, just purchased my own, been living here for three years now. I've been in Arizona for approximately 13 years. So I'm the new kid on the block. On the plus side, I have no political experience before. Consequently, I've got no ties to anyone other than to the citizens of Gilbert. I'm, I've wanted to do this for quite some time, but the opportunity never afforded itself. I've either been busy as a single parent with two kids or I've been working for some other employer that prohibited involvement in outside activities such as this. Now that I've opened up my own office, my youngest has graduated from high school, finally the opportunity and the time is mine to do with as I see fit and I'd like to take this opportunity. As a former intelligence officer and attorney, what I bring to the table is critical thinking and project management. These are things that I'm familiar with, these are things that I do well and I can do, I can look at things from a perspective that not everybody can see and ask the questions that need to be asked so that we know that we're going in the right direction.
So the first question is that the town has adopted a set of financial policies which are public record and available upon request to the town clerk. Are there any changes or additions to these policies that you would make? If so, which ones and why?
Thank you, council member Peterson. I took a look over the fiscal policies that the town of Gilbert has in place and frankly, I was quite impressed with the detail and with the scope and the direction that these policies have the town going. The only thing that I could think of that was possibly needing consideration was when I looked in paragraph two of the policy statement, there was a section in there where it limited the mayor's ability to transfer funds within programs to a cap of $50,000. Now, not being familiar with the town's budget, I don't know how long it's been since this issue's been looked at, but it seemed to me that the $50,000 cap might be low for the mayor's discretion to move funds around rather than bringing it before the full council. I thought that perhaps maybe that was something that could be reviewed. If it was still good, that's fine, but if it was reviewed, maybe it was, there could be just cause for raising it to perhaps $75,000. My experience, I can tell you, I am not one of those people that believes that something needs to be changed just because it can be changed. If it works and it's not broken, don't fix it. So that's my view on that. But I think that it seemed to me that it was kind of low and I was just curious as to when it was last considered and when it was established at the rate of that amount of $50,000.
Robert, thanks again for being here. This question's on our Parks and Rec. As you've observed the design phase of the regional park in South Gilbert, what are two areas that you feel are strengths in this design and two opportunities the town should be addressing going forward? After that question, if you could have any initial thoughts on the financial model for the park?
Certainly, thank you Vice Mayor Taylor. First off, I like the Gilbert Regional Park from what I From what I saw, it looks like a great project. The strengths, I appreciated how comprehensive the project was. It seems to appeal to every age group and just about every activity that the citizens of Gilbert might want to be involved in, from the aquatic center to the skate park, to the ball fields, to the amphitheater. Very comprehensive, very well-thought-out, and I'm very impressed with the program. Mentioning it, I also, the other aspect of it that I really appreciated was the amphitheater. Not every park has an amphitheater. A lot of them are just much smaller and just have basics, but I like the inclusion of the amphitheater. Having said that, that takes me into the weaknesses of the project. Again, I like the amphitheater. I think it could actually be a revenue generator, but I was concerned about the capacity being limited to 3,000. I didn't know if perhaps expanding the capacity of the amphitheater would allow for small-level concerts, small local bands that are trying to get started can have shows there, and you can have some revenue generation from the amphitheater with perhaps a larger capacity. With regard to the amphitheater, I also am concerned, the food truck, the layout of the park, the food truck area is, could be more centrally located. It's a little pushed down. It serves well for the ball fields, but it's not very well-located for the amphitheater. And my thought is that people going to the amphitheater for some type of a show would also want to avail themselves of the food trucks, and it's a bit of a run to get from the amphitheater to where the food trucks are set up. So, that was a, and then finally, I'm sure it's been considered, but I'm concerned about the possible traffic congestion overload on those roads, once the park is completed. There might need to be some expansion there. With regard to financing, my thought would be that the user-based system, particularly for the aquatic center and the general purpose center, would be appropriate. And then, I would also think that general funding would have already been worked out before the first plot of land was purchased.
Robert, our capital improvement plan is essential to the short and long-term planning of our community. How would you prioritize the projects included in the CIP plan?
Thank you, Mayor Daniels. My view on the capital improvement plan priorities is basically goes to my fundamental views of government. First and foremost, I would think that funds need to be allocated towards maintenance. The city is in great shape now, from a citizen's perspective, and it needs to be maintained. We need to keep everything running the way it's supposed to be and provide those services, those critical services to the citizens of Gilbert. After that, once you've got everything under control and maintained, then what you want to look at is potential improvements for the citizens of Gilbert in the way of services and quality of life. The regional park is a perfect example of improving the services and the quality of life for the citizens. After that, I would think we would want to focus on efficiencies, trying to do what we can to put funds into projects that would make the town even more efficient, so that going long-term, we are getting the most bang for our buck everywhere we spend one. And then, finally, I would look at putting funds towards growth. We want the city to grow and to flourish, but I believe those other three categories need to take a higher priority over growth, because if you don't have the basics covered and you don't have the citizenry taken care of, no amount of growth is going to compensate for that.
Robert, thank you for coming down tonight and putting yourself forward for this process. Having observed the council over the last few months or years, what is one thing that you would do differently, and what's one thing that you would do the same?
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Again, I've only been in Gilbert for three years. I am not, by any stretch of the imagination, a political junkie. Quite frankly, I had to check to find out where the council chambers were. This is my first time down here, and so, I've not been closely involved with the actions of the council. However, my view on the work that the council has done is based on the results that I've seen. I moved to Gilbert three years ago because I wanted to live in Gilbert. I wanted my son to go to high school here in Gilbert. I wanted to live in Gilbert, as opposed to any other city in the valley. That was my personal choice, because I liked what I saw. And then, it was only after I moved here that I learned of the other things that were going on here, that Gilbert is one of the fastest-growing communities in the country, that it is the number-one safest town in the state of Arizona. These are things that are fabulous, and they are attributable, at least in part, to the work of this council. With regard to things that I would like to, that I would disagree with, with the council, I really, I can't honestly put my finger on anything. I can tell you, my daughter is, works for the city of Gilbert, and through her, I've had the opportunity to meet Chief Dorn. And I can only say that perhaps with tongue-in-cheek, that I wouldn't have let Chief Dorn put in his retirement papers, because he's an excellent, excellent police chief, and I really liked what I saw when I met with him.
Hi, Robert. How are you?
Fine.
What do you think you would be able to accomplish or contribute to the town during your appointment to the town council?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Peterson. I recognize that this is a temporary position. This is scheduled to expire in January 2017. I liken that to other work that I've done, where currently I serve as a judge pro tem with the Maricopa County Superior Court. When I go in and I fill in for another judge, I'm not there to rewrite the law. I'm not there to change his courtroom. I'm not there to make history. I'm there to hold down the fort while that judge or commissioner is out, for whatever reason, vacation, illness, a family emergency. I view this position as the same thing. I would be someone here, hold down the fort, not make waves and change everything, but to keep the council going in the direction and keep the town of Gilbert going in the direction that it's been going in for years. In doing that, what I can bring to the table is my sense of logic, my acquisitive nature, where I can realize the questions that need to be answered in order to make sure the right decisions are made, and make sure that we continue on conservative practices that have been implemented by this council that have led to Gilbert's success.
Robert, thank you for your desire to serve, and I think from all of us, we want to thank you for serving our country.
My pleasure.
The town council sets policy for the compensation and benefits for all town employees. What compensation approaches are you most familiar with? And what is the best approach for Team Gilbert?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Cook. As I indicated, I'm a former military and an attorney. Finance is not my area of expertise, by any stretch of the imagination. Having said that, my experience, I have seen a compensation package that I thought was very interesting some years ago, involving corporations compensating their CEOs with payment of stocks, as opposed to straight salaries. The benefit that this resulted in was, the CEOs were tied to the success of the corporation. They had a vested interest in ensuring that the corporation was successful, and so, they did everything to keep the stocks up. By keeping the stocks up, you kept the stockholders happy, and the company was more successful, and everything fed one on the other. Now, clearly, this is not a practice that can apply directly to the town of Gilbert. However, if that is an issue, one of the aspects that can be looked into is, are there quantifiable best interests of Gilbert that can be used to assess that compensation can be tied to? So that you can say, you've done this for the citizens of Gilbert, and it's quantifiable, and we can tie compensation to that. I don't know if that's possible, but if you're looking at a revision of the compensation packages or some type of a tweak or an addition to them, that is something that I have seen and a little bit familiar with, that could be a possible option that might bear looking into. But again, admittedly, finance is not my expertise or my area of practice.
Robert, that concludes the question portion. We'll have your one-minute closing. And upon completion of that, if you can return to room 233. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Again, I want to thank the council for selecting me to have an opportunity to speak before you and be considered for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to being of service to the town. As I indicated before, I've not had the opportunity before, due to time constraints in other areas. I do now have the time, and should I not be selected, I still want to be of service to the town of Gilbert in some other capacity, whatever that might be. And honestly, I expect to learn more, if I'm selected, from my experience here with the council, than the council could possibly learn from me. And I just look forward to that opportunity. Thank you.
Our third and final interview for tonight will be James Canlin. James, welcome to council chambers. We will, yeah, thanks for being here. We'll begin with the two-minute opening, and then Councilmember Victor Peterson will start us off on the questions.
Perfect. Well, I appreciate the opportunity. Sitting upstairs with the other two gentlemen, you've picked some great folks, and I won't put my name in there, but they are great individuals, and I appreciate the opportunity to, it's an honor to be here in front of you. Just by way of introduction, my name is James Canlin. I've been living in Gilbert for a little over 20 years. My family moved from Maryland when I was 13, moved to Mesa. And when I got married and came back to Arizona, Gilbert was the only place to be, because my wife is, I think, third generation here. So, we came back, and we've raised all five of our sons here in Gilbert, and it's been a wonderful place. I've worked in both public and private sector. I've worked with both APS and Siemens Corporation, doing a lot of government work, regulatory work, as well as Maricopa County, as you can see in my resume. I worked there as chief of staff at the board of supervisors for a lot of years, and worked closely with the town of Gilbert through that time as an advocate and working closely with the council. And then, now, I own two small businesses here in Gilbert, and so, happy to be here. I thank you again for the opportunity. Sure, it's a great honor for me to come and be a part of this process.
The town has adopted a set of financial policies which are public record and available upon request to the town clerk. Are there any changes or additions to these policies that you would like to make? If so, which ones and why?
I read this, and I'm grateful to be able to receive this document from your clerk's office this morning. And I was proud when I saw the information on fiscal responsibility and conservative values that you put in with respects to your budget and your fiscal conservatism. I was grateful to see that as a taxpayer, I'm sorry, mayor and Councilman Peterson. You know, in doing a lot of these at Maricopa County, I've worked with a lot of departments in developing policies and budgets and looked at the different things that go into these things. So, I'm well aware of what goes into this type of document, and I appreciate that. I would say that if I was going to add something to this document, I don't know that there's anything that I would take away from it, but I appreciated the information that was there. I noticed a lot of information in the information technology section. You really kind of dove deep into that section and provided a lot of detail as to what they'll do with regards to policy in that department. I noticed that you touched on certain areas like responsibility with vehicles and your facilities departments and other areas like that. If I was to add to this, Mr. Peterson, I would say that I would put more specific ways to cut costs and reduce the budget amounts, to see if there's cost savings in there. But I'd also put in there things that could directly impact certain departments. For example, I think it'd be positive to put in there, I noticed in your CIP plan that you had information with regards to natural gas in fleet vehicles. You can drill down and show actual cost savings to the town and how that can be applied back to debt service and things of that nature. Also, there's a great opportunity for energy reduction, not only in natural gas, but there's great opportunities to take a look at facilities departments. I would bet that in that budget, there is a lot of, a lot in the budget with respects to operating and maintaining your facilities departments. And there's some great ways to reduce energy consumption inside facilities with energy conservation measures. At the county, we took the opportunity of implementing $40 million worth of energy conservation measures, which ended up saving the county about $1 million a year in reductions. And so, when I was working on plans such as these, those level of detail were added, and so, the board of supervisors was able to make decisions and policies based on opportunities such as those.
James, thanks for being here. Appreciate it. My question here is on parks and rec. As you've observed the design phase of the regional park in South Gilbert, what are two areas you feel are strengths in this design and two opportunities the town should be addressing going forward? And if there's any extra time, happy to hear your thoughts on the funding model for the park.
I'll be quick on this one, because I would like to get to funding, because that's something I believe in strongly. But two areas of strength, when I worked at the county parks, you may or may not know this, but they have the largest park system of any county government in America in Maricopa County. I know how important parks are to the community and to its residents. And so, it's an important part. It attracts business, it attracts people, it attracts quality homes, you know, it's an important part of our community. With that said, what I saw are the strengths, Mr. Taylor, were the, that there was something to do for everybody there. As I looked at that, there's a dog park, there's soccer, there's baseball, there's aquatic center, there's, you name it, they've got a climbing, you know, an amphitheater, great things for folks to do. And so, I thought that was a very positive thing, and will certainly be a gem in the Gilbert area. The second thing that I saw was an emphasis on public-private partnerships, and I think that's a very positive thing. And it's a great way to attract business and also to create revenue generation for the town. create revenue generation for the town. Some opportunities, I think the public-private partnership is, again, if I can use that as an opportunity, that I think there are more opportunities for that, more retail space, opportunity for folks to dine and shop there. I think that's a great opportunity. One thing I noticed, and I'm not, I would consider this an opportunity, is I noticed two drives in and out, maybe looking at traffic control to see if it's going to get congested with the amount of people that I envisioned that might be there would be important, and see if there's maybe other ulterior routes that might be able to get out of there. Payment, I think, is very important because as a fiscal conservative, I want to make sure that my taxes stay low, and I would not be a proponent of raising taxes for this type of project. And so might I suggest that the sale of excess property, and I note that it's on our ballots coming up to use as opportunities to pay down some of the debt, I might also provide opportunities for other leasing. Cell towers are great opportunities, as we all know, they pop up on a lot of municipal land and provide great revenue to the towns or the cities or the counties. And fees, not high fees, you know, but we can all go over to Freestone, and we know it's going to cost something to get into Freestone and take part there. Fees can be a way to help pay for this type of service to the city, the town, excuse me.
Our capital improvement plan is essential to the short and long-term planning of our community. How would you prioritize the projects included in the CIP?
Well, that's an interesting document of 310 pages, and so it's hard to go through that all last night and today, but it's, I think it's very well thought out, and it shows a lot of thought by yourselves and by your staff, and I'm sure Patrick was integral in that. But working through these types of projects before at Maricopa County, I think it's very important that your departments are intimately involved in making sure that their thoughts and their voices are heard in that process because they're going to have things that they need to get done, and they're going to help you prioritize projects. But with that said, the specific ask, Mayor, is what would I do to prioritize these, and it would be as follows. I would take public safety first. I think that the most important thing to any town or municipality is public safety, and we can't neglect that, and making sure that our police and fire departments have the resources that they need to manage and help the public feel safe in the community, I think, is number one for me. Number two, I kind of lumped these two together, so forgive me, but I would say water and wastewater. A healthy, vibrant community depends on good services to that community, and water and wastewater, I can't imagine turning on my tap and having not healthy water coming out. So I think that's important to the health and safety of our community as well. Traffic control, I listed as number three, and I think that's important for safety and purposes as well. But I would lean on the staff of the town to make sure that as they prioritize those different, the traffic control, the roads and streets that need to be taken care of, that they do it in a way that it isn't going to create traffic problems and safety problems for our community. And so picking streets, arterial streets, that aren't close to one another, just making sure there's a good plan for the dollars that's spent. And then finally, I think parks is a very important thing to this community, and I love the plan that you put forth, and I think it's a beautiful park, and I think it's one that we can take pride in if the funding is there to be able to put the dollars into that plan.
James, thanks for being here tonight and putting yourself forward in this process. Having observed the council over the last few months or the last few years, what is one thing that you would do differently as a member of the council, and what is one thing that you would want to keep the same if you were a member of the council?
This is a tough question. I think the hardest one for me to answer, but Mayor, no offense, if I could, I think one thing that would do differently is talk the former mayor into staying and filling out his term and not being in this position right now.
Me too.
You know, I've been here a lot with Boy Scouts, with religious, in front of you, in my religious callings, doing a lot of things with the town. I'm not sure I have noted anything that I might change. But one thing I will say is, whatever council it has been over the last two decades that I've been here, I've noted a very real collaboration and a desire that each of the, the mayor and each council member has in making Gilbert great, and I think that that's perfect. And I hope that if I have the opportunity to sit with you, that that will stay the same because Gilbert is a great place to live, work, play. It's the greatest city and greatest town in America, and so that's what I would say.
Hi, James. How are you? What do you think you would be able to accomplish or contribute to the town during your appointment to the town council?
Well, and this is an interesting question because given it's a four-and-a-half-month appointment, I thought about this, what do you say? What plans do you put forth, and how do you accomplish, say, "We're going to do X, Y, and Z in four months"? That might be difficult, but what I would add to this is, what I bring is experience, what I bring is knowledge, is expertise, is an understanding of government, how it works, understanding the process, understand working with departments, managing budgets, working, you know, an understanding of other local communities, other policymakers, the impact that they have. I think I bring a business experience and knowledge that, and combine that with government, that is very positive and can have a positive influence, especially when we look at moving forward your conservative fiscal principles, as you note here in your policy statement.
James, thank you for your desire to serve. We appreciate it, and even your service in the past. The town council sets policy for the compensation and benefits for all town employees. What compensation approaches are you most familiar with, and what is the best approach for Team Gilbert?
Can I have an hour on this question?
Three minutes.
Okay, I know. This one is very important because I'm passionate about it. Growing up in a human resources family, I understand compensation benefits. My dad beat it into my head over a lot of years. At Maricopa County, I worked on deferred compensation, I chaired deferred compensation committee, as well as worked on the wellness programs at Maricopa County for a lot of years. It's an important thing because we know that our revenues are going down while our expenses are going up, especially in healthcare, and we can blame the federal government, but that's a discussion for another day. But what I would say is a very specific wellness program that isn't just an education but has requirements to it, reporting mechanisms, so that the town can understand what it is that they're spending their dollars on and find ways to reduce those. Let me give you an example. As you all know, healthcare costs rise, especially in large organizations, because of the number of visits you might make to a doctor or to an ER facility. There are ways to reduce that increase in cost, one being like Teladoc. I'm not here to promote anybody. Teladoc, where you can call, get a prescription over the phone, and you skip that step of going to the ER for a basic common cold, which drives up costs. Again, I spoke about wellness systems. The idea of compensations typically is very difficult because while we don't promote laying off, that's a bad word, there are things you can do through attrition, such as if a job were, a person were to retire, you might be able to take that person's job responsibilities, break it into two or three, give those individuals an increase in compensation but still save dollars because you're not paying those large costs in compensation as well as benefits that would cost you for that particular employee. You know, and this is a tough one, and it's important to understand because of the rise in these costs, and I believe very strongly that it can be managed, but it has to be managed working with departments and understanding their needs and making sure that as they're working with their employees, that there's a reporting mechanism back to the council to understand what it is that's driving costs up.
James, thank you. That's all six questions. At this time, we'll do the one-minute closing, and different from the other candidates, we will actually have you stay here. The other two will come back down to this room as we move into 233 for executive session. So one-minute closing.
Thank you. I won't take long. I know you've been here for a long time. I'll just say again, thank you. It's a true honor to have the opportunity to stand before you. It would be an honor to serve. I consider myself not green, I can hit the ground running, and with my experience and background, I can make that pledge to you. But it's an honor, it would be a true honor to serve the town of Gilbert. I've loved the community, and I want to keep it the greatest place in America to live, so thank you.
Again, we'd like to publicly thank all candidates for bearing with us for all six of those questions. Is there a motion to recess the special meeting and reconvene in an executive session?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for being patient with us. We would like to reconvene this special meeting and we will move specifically to administrative item number two. I'll look to council for a motion. Thank you. We'll do a motion in just a second. We just want to keep everybody on pins and needles for just another few minutes. First, we just want to thank all 29 applicants that we had for this position. That's a pretty incredible number. The quantity of people who are both qualified and willing to serve in this community is impressive and we are grateful for all who are willing to throw their hat in the ring and put themselves out there. We very much appreciate, especially the three of you, Eric Jones, James Canlin, and Robert Dunn, for your commitment to the town and for your willingness to serve at this level. We can all attest to the fact that it's not always an easy job, but serving your community certainly is worth all time, energy, and effort that it takes. So, thank you very much for that. With that, we will look to Vice Mayor Taylor for a motion.
Mayor, thank you. I move to select James Canlin to fill the vacant town council seat with a term ending January of 2017.
And I will second.
We've had a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion is approved with a six oh vote. With that, January, excuse me, August 18th will be our next regularly scheduled council meeting where we will be swearing in Mr. James Canlin to that position at the very beginning of that meeting. And we will get right to work right after that. So, thank you again for all being here. At this time, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.